When the call is made to order at 3:06 PM, Dr. Ehrlich, please address the roll call.
Mm-hmm. Senator President Perkins?
Here.
Senator Cabral?
I'm sitting. Um, she's coming on.
Okay. Senator Kruger?
Here.
Senator Nakvima?
Here, here.
Is she here?
Uh, I'm sitting.
Okay. Senator Cronell? Senator Alvarado?
Yeah.
Senator Salas? Is she here?
Uh... Senator Salas?
Over there.
Senator Galvin? Senator Diaz Martinez?
Here.
Senator Tobin?
Here.
Are you still avoiding our call?
Alright, uh, is there a motion to approve last meeting's minutes? Is there a second? Any objections? Alright, with that prior meeting minutes have been approved, uh, before we approve the agenda, is there a motion to uh amend of the agenda by striking all of the executive board updates minus Jackson and Brian or President DeGrom on PBC lead?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any objections? With that, the agenda is amended. Okay, um... Is there someone on line?
Yeah.
Hi, Senator Cabral. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? Any objections? Alright, um... Moving on to call to the audience, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time, either on the line or in the room? Okay, moving on to first read legislation, starting with Senate Bill fourteen, the Health Fee Increase. Uh, is there a motion to discuss? Is there a second? Any objections? Proceed. Senator Kruger?
So, I visited with my friend Greg, and she was talking about how she feels as though, um, students may not be understanding that students gave Dr. Crowe, uh, I guess, an agenda of six goals to, that they wanted to achieve within this year, and, um, she feels as though that a lot of the students don't know that us students asked for this to be put on that goal list. And from that, um, I don't know if she is probably going to be considered necessary to protect her, but from what I've heard, most students aren't very into it, um, I just wanted to see if I would discuss because I wanted to see if any other senators think that.
Senators, any discussion? Is there a need for this?
I just, uh, also wanted to discuss it because I think a lot of people were just sitting there where they healthy in general, basically like, I mean, there's already like forty dollar fee for me to pay, and then increasing it. Again. This was, I mean, it's substantial. Just kind of on the basis of like, who it is, you know?
Senator Kruger? Senator Chobai?
So, I have been, as you said, that has been out in email on India, and I have been receiving from constituents of the state of India, um, basically, they have been hearing their, um, their non-support for, as I would say, um, they were really concerned with the fact that they currently, um, didn't know what the Health Fee actually did for them, and then they were very concerned with the fact that there was no way marketing as to what the Health Fee actually does, what that actually gets, and I think that's the one thing that we have, I mean, there should probably be hearing on the side, um, of that and making sure that they know that changes what the Health Fee actually gets you, and then, you know, going from there. But for, from my constituents, they were not agreed with the Health Fee either.
Senators, any other discussion? Is there a motion to move Senate Bill fourteen to second read? President DeGrom?
For the senators voting this amendment, it has a feedback college of different sports on former Excel spreadsheet, but I'm more just about census you gathered from talking.
Senator Kruger? To answer President DeGrom's question, um, the type of feedback that I received was going in front of my classes, uh, with the permission of the professor beforehand and asking the students, and I did receive a lot of questions about it that I was luckily able to answer, um, thank you to President DeGrom's lovely Health Fee forum that we had, and, um, overall, I received a lot of questions with a negative connotation to it. And, um, overall, I did ask if anyone did have anything to join in, and about half of the students there, um, raised their hands, they did say that they would not stay broke because they already are paying money for the Health Fee, um, why should they be paying for things that they might not necessarily utilize that would come with the Health Fee? So to answer your question, I do not have Excel spreadsheets, it's primarily through going up in front of the classes.
Any further senators? Please.
Uh, I think like part of the the reason why I think, I personally didn't use a spreadsheet, and I think like a lot of it was just because of like, I think that there's like maybe a stigma around the fact that if you want to go and talk to somebody about this issue, maybe they won't give you a straightforward answer if you like face-to-face with them, versus like if you send out like something like confidential form where they say, hey, you can throw it out, maybe they can be more honest and express themselves a little bit more versus like face-to-face like conversation like that, I always think that that's always, I think a person will be much more honest if they know that there's
Any further discussion? Further discussion?
Yes, so, can I answer that or?
Um, in a second, for those that are not here, my first.
Okay, so, uh, the way I did it is I printed out the forms, and then distributed them in class, it's yes, kind of. I didn't reveal yes or no, like you read yes or no in there, and that kind of... Okay, so based on the final conclusion, almost three quarters of them say, you know, and they were under, undermining the word, you know, showing that they strongly believe it, and I thought that was a good way to, to like reach out to them, of course, they were looking at it, not like the form, okay, forms are good, but then someone could be lazy to open the link and maybe fill in all the information, but telling them to just like name and then if you really agree or not, helped me to reach there.
Is there a motion to move Senate Bill fourteen to second read legislation?
Move Senate Bill fourteen.
Is there a, is there a second? Any objections? Is there a motion? You have to move it to second read in order to take action on it, so whether that means, uh, voting yes or no, it can only be voted on in second read, so if you'd like to discuss further, commit a motion to discuss, uh, but in order to take action on it, you need to get it in second read. Any objections? That's Senate Bill fourteen, will be moved to second read legislation. On to Senate Bill thirteen, uh, is there a motion to discuss? Is there a second? Any objections? Proceed. Okay. Any, any? So, Senator Alvarado, Senator Galvin, direct to this one?
So, um, with Senate Bill fourteen, um, basically just, um, talks about how it just basically states the new changes that are happening with N V A C because we just switched to an online process. Um, through ORC, uh, we've added the removal of the D O F because we saw that there about that, so it just states that as well, um, so we added on that, um, a new section that describes the uh, the duties that the chair will have, um, that the chair will be a voting member of, um, of the Senate, um.
Do we have anything to add? Um, I think Senator Alvarado kind of covered it all, um, we did cover another idea today with, um, about setting deadlines and... Sorry, I'm trying to find the... Where did it go in public chat?
Um, there's a folder, under special sessions, there's agenda minutes and pending legislation, and under pending legislation, there should be the three bills in consideration today.
Oh. Okay. Okay. Um... So, yeah, just adding that last for all senators to vote, just because we try to get the puzzle um, student boards to get running as soon as possible, um, you know, there's just people who have gotten upset about not getting any time for their events or, um, not getting feedback at all in general, just... Sorry, um... Uh, just have a question for, uh, for the bill caller, um, are we gonna have the Chair of VAC start attending important things, just as the D O F did? I didn't know that was brought up right this... Uh, watching the way I am. Um, I think I can speak to that. Um, that's a new idea to me, I don't know. And, um, it's something that, uh, has been, I don't think we've finalized this yet, so... It's... That's a good idea.
Senator Kruger?
Um, the only reason why I asked that was because I just thought that since you, since Senator Galvin does work hand-in-hand with uh, the G P S, you know, so much, and I know that, um, she's a support as well as, um, all the other, um, directors, I don't know if it would be, I don't know if Senator Galvin would feel like it would be beneficial for the students and things, I didn't know if we'd want to make it a requirement, it was just an idea, I, I've given, I've given a question to that point.
Um, in-board meetings essentially are this, are caucus meetings, but within the executive board, so I think it'd be more beneficial to have the Chair of VAC and future generations of U S G work with the, uh, Department of Services, but not necessarily at the tent in board, so again, working closely in conjunction with Vice President Services, um, but I don't think it would, sorry. Is there any further discussion? Senator Galvin?
Um, I could attend as an audience, but I feel like it's
There's... Further discussion? Is there a motion to move Senate Bill thirteen to second read legislation?
I'm going to move Senate Bill thirteen to second read legislation.
Is there a second? Any objections? Let's see. Any objections? Seeing none, we're going to move Senate Bill thirteen to second read legislation. Moving on to second read legislation, starting with Senate Bill twelve, agenda posting, is there a motion to discuss?
Need to discuss a motion.
Is there a second? Any objections? Initially, if there's no discussion or no more questions, you can always move it to, uh, for the higher roll call as well. Is there another motion? Senator Kruger?
Just to clarify, this is the
Agenda. Okay.
It's what it is. Parts two.
Senator Alvarado? Any further? Senator Kruger?
I have just moved to a roll call.
Is there a second? Any objections? Director Ehrlich, will you please call the roll?
Senator Cabral?
Aye.
Senator Kruger?
Aye.
Senator Nakvima?
Aye.
Senator Cronell?
Aye.
Senator Alvarado?
Aye.
Senator Salas?
Not voting.
Senator Galvin?
Aye.
Senator Diaz Martinez?
Aye.
Senator Chobai?
Aye.
Okay. That Senate Bill twelve has been passed, moving on to Senate Bill fourteen, Health Fee Increase. Is there a motion?
I won't.
Yes.
But wait.
Is there a, just a general motion, so is there a motion to discuss, a motion to move roll call vote, it's up to you guys. Sorry. Vote by roll call?
By roll call.
Is there, is, is there a second?
Next.
Any objections? May Director Ehrlich, please call the roll?
Um, Senator Cabral?
Aye.
Senator Kruger?
No.
Senator Nakvima?
No.
Senator Cronell?
No.
Senator Alvarado?
No.
Senator Salas?
Not voting.
Senator Galvin?
Aye.
Senator Diaz Martinez?
No.
Senator Tobin?
Aye.
Director Ehrlich, do you mind, uh, saying ayes and ayes and not voting in the first?
Gosh.
Okay. I don't want to pull up, that's why I asked. I have a vote of one aye, two ayes, five nays, and one not voting, failed to pass, vote fourteen. Moving on to Senate Bill thirteen, rising VAC operations, is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? Any objections? Director Ehrlich, please call the roll.
Uh, Senator Cabral?
Aye.
Senator Kruger?
Aye.
Senator Nakvima?
Aye.
Senator Cronell?
Aye.
Senator Alvarado?
Aye.
Senator Salas?
Not voting.
Senator Galvin?
Aye.
Senator Diaz Martinez?
Aye.
Senator Chobai?
Aye.
By your vote of eight ayes, zero nays, and one not voting, passed Senate Bill thirteen. Moving on to executive report, starting with President DeGrom.
Um, there was one, one of our similar updates already in the board, um, a whole event going on next week with the G P S A disaster that partnered with the Republican Congress in regard to the higher education reauthorization that ensuring that some of the proposed amendments to that after it went back to the group uh, just in the interest of our students in regard to, uh, some Title IX policies that would actually step up back progress that was made, uh, pretty decent administration, but then additionally some restructuring when it comes to the repayment and the refund of loans at a national level, so essentially getting rid of, um, any loan reimbursement or reimbursement program if you were second in charge of the public to the office of your CPA, lawyer, attorney, um, that are they were giving rid of that, uh, program, the other things regarding parent plus funds and subsidized loans, so that sounds all really complicated to, um, by G P S A, but the job of carrying script for us, we call our congressional representatives, um, both from your out-of-state, uh, your out-of-state representatives, but then if you're from areas out of it, just working with us to make sure we're petitioning, um, some of the numbers to a certain party that may be there, that's the... Uh, so this will then be next Thursday, probably up at thirty to two thirty PM, G P S A office, and don't forget dates on, so see you all in a minute.
President DeGrom, do you have some question?
Yes.
Senator Kruger?
Uh, President DeGrom mentioned that there were federal line issues that could have sent us back, how specifically would that affect the students as a whole? Especially with
So, it would necessarily be related to ASU, ASU's made a pretty strong commitment to making sure of what the progress they've made in terms of creating federal line office, so having a large number of federal line informers, that they're just going um, ensuring that their information is readily available on the websites, it would more so, uh, negate the framework that was rated across the country, so it's more of a system that's used specifically to ASU, but ASU has been very, uh, definite in their position, saying that they want, um, roll back any of the progress they did, like, in, in such close terms, a lot of factors.
Any more questions? Seeing none, moving on to our vice president. Nope.
Uh... I know we just finished discussion on one theme, and now we have to talk about another, uh, and more on the, just like the trailer, where the process in general, reviewing the athletic speed, whether C O P has asked for a review and ensure that things that get asked for in regulations and administrations have uh, come to fruition, and fully taken on the documents, if you have any ideas on how to improve the athletic experience in general, um, there's a large, it's going to be any event specifically the athletic, um, there are certain ways that may be, sort of, in addition, spending more information on specifically, um, important dates, remember, it's a month away, it'll be, depending on your calendar, it is the uh, exhaustion hearing, uh, there's some order reasons that, uh, is taking place on the twenty eighth of March. But, um, does that do prompt for information, either to myself or my
Is there any questions? Seeing none, moving on to our vice president.
Hello, everybody, uh, not a lot different from what it was last week, um, but I do want to prompt, uh, general, he, about an hour ago, uh, about official awards, how many of you know what official awards are? Raise your hands. How many of you are listening to me raising a hand? Good, okay, sorry, it's easier, sorry, um, so official awards, don't know what it is, it's our end of awards show for ASU, we'll be, uh, celebrating the best and greatest of our special finances, uh, it's a nice gaudy event where you dress up and it's kind of red carpet-y, series being called at the civilian instead of the organ reader, which is a real shame, my eyes, the organ is really grateful to have an event like that, but they're trying to show off their, uh, billion, get their money's worth out of it, uh, that will be on, uh, April fifth, that's a Thursday night, also have a, uh, same as before, hopefully the one that will be done by then, so anybody in Alabama today might have to, uh, be in line, uh, that will depend on the schedule that April has, um, probably by two weeks out, um, like I said in the, uh, message, it's very likely that this event will be mandatory, and that's for your guys to benefit because it's one of the coolest events we have, uh, every year, and it's a really fun thing to go to. Uh, related to that, voting is open on Sunday at midnight, so it'd be really great, it takes about five minutes to go through the list, uh, we have a few downtown campus elevations, uh, so go and vote for those events, those groups, or if you feel under groups serving of those wars, you can vote for that as well, um, and send that out to your friends, uh, your classmates, your constituents, anybody who's an ASU student, uh, undergrad or graduate, can vote in that, um, and that'd be really great, that everybody voting on that for that town, um...
Any questions for Vice President Lee? Seeing none, moving on to Senate reports, so hi guys, hope you had a good week. Not much to report for me that won't be covered in other business points, but, uh, majority of the week I focused on helping Senators Galvin Alvarado finish up the appendix one legislation, uh, as well as developing, help the bill that we just voted down, uh, legislation reviewing and writing, it's the majority of my week, initially dealing with funny requests and navigating the issues that we've been having with the system, as well as, uh, trying to respond to student organizations in a timely manner, um, I had a conversation earlier this afternoon with Vice President Lee and Senator Galvin about potentially developing a strike system that we can use, uh, in order to instill accountability with the VAC and getting back to student organizations in a timely manner. Um, the details are still being worked out on that, but if you'd like to be involved in the process, I fully invite and encourage you to help us, um, but other than that, everything else that I want to say will be covered in other business points, so are there any questions for me? Senator Alvarado?
I'd say, like, I'd say, I would like to discuss the VAC box, um, I'm I would just to, um, talk about, um, how to vote for VAC too, and I'm also reporting more in my update to get better, but I think that makes some, we want to go over.
Um, just a suggestion, uh, because we've been having some issues with, not necessarily responsiveness, because VAC has been pretty quick to respond for the most part, uh, we should develop a system sooner rather than later, just so that we can have a system that we can use to hold ourselves accountable, so I think the earlier we have that conversation, the better, so it may not be the most appropriate action to wait until next VACs, uh, I think that's a discussion we should continue to have throughout the week, uh, but ultimately it is up to you, but that's just my suggestion. Senator Kruger?
Do we want to open the session for here, or do you feel as though it would be?
I don't feel that way at all, if you would like to amend the agenda to add a new business point that covers that, I'd be Senator?
Um... Question for me, to amend the agenda to add a new business point of, um, the strikes.
Is there a second? Any objections? Great. Any other questions, Senator Alvarado? We missed us, so further ahead. Any more questions for me? My updates. Okay, um, moving on to various, uh, Senator Cabral sent me a short update just to say that, uh, E A C should be prepared to work on passport to Phoenix, and I know Vice President Yvonne said that she was working on a list of vendors that she was going to distribute to E A C to have members of VAC contact with vendors in preparation for passport to Phoenix, so that will be coming up next week. Um, and that concludes Uh and that concludes our updates. Moving on to CHS.
Yeah, um this week have really been tough for me. Um I had a a great meeting with Bailey and we were talking about my action plan and what I liked to do. It was really good. And then I had to meet with uh one CHS staff called Karina. And I was being like, almost everyone was recommending her as the person who would finally support me. It was just so kinda like, I had a controversial meeting though with her. Cause we ended up like mostly having like different talks about everything. And then it ended up that she thinks that when students come to ASU, they already know why they are here. And they already know why they chose the colleges and they don't need the non-creation. And that was wrong. I couldn't like prove her or do anything. So basically I expected to get more support, but I didn't get it like I expected. And that was okay, but I finally met with the dean and we were talking about the same stuff and then bowling with the dean, which went well. And it seems like she'll be doing something to like help our staff and faculty to like support us better and more. Yeah, and then I attended the GAVRPS meeting and we had the baby team, we had baby team that uh take us through the resolutions and deals and the differences and how to write both of them. So that was really great and I mean, I use my.
Any questions for Senator Alvarado? Moving on to Senator Ture.
Hi everyone. I hope you had a good. Um this week basically consisted of me preparing for getting ready for the the influencer. Um she was very gracious and allowing us to sit down and talk to her about some ideas from that. Uh one idea that I've been opposed to her was possibly reading up uh bowling with the dean. Uh right now I see that a lot of CHS students are particularly well connected to the call itself as well as the administrators. So I think it would be a very nice way to casually introduce the dean to her students and who she's working for basically. Um she was very happy about it and I proposed for us to go to looking straight past and seeing very accessible. Going into like places as well as anywhere to meet downtown campus. Um unfortunately, we didn't get through all the business points that I did for this week too. But um overall, we did discuss the help fee as well. And I did voice a little bit of research about students' knowledge of it. But I guess we did shoot down the street bill. Um I hope none of you are psyched about this. And um overall, I think I'm definitely very happy to have actually come to sit down with her. You all know that it's been a very rough.
Any questions for Senator Alvarado? Uh Senators Nakim and Alvera, did you answer the questions that I sent in the email yesterday? Pardon? Did you answer the questions I sent in the email yesterday? Okay, we can revisit that at final statements, but um just a reminder that I sent three questions in the email of the agenda yesterday. Uh that could have those answered by the end of the day. That would be ideal. Uh we can come back if you didn't include them in your updates and the final statements, but I would like to hear answers to those questions. Would you like to speak to those then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh or how have you improved the daily lives of these students? Um I try to make myself accessible to our students as much as possible, living off campus. It has been quite a temper of being available. But uh with the schedule that I've set up as well as future schedules I set up, I am on campus a lot. And um I do know a lot of people from local friend groups, I think it's possible to be able to be on the Barrett floor sometimes and then be on the uh Colquitt floor and then the Copsas floor. So um I've been trying to make myself very available and I do try and chime in with the Senate President Perkins as well as the President DeGrom when it comes to Being knowledgeable and the current events that are going on with ASU. Um it was really nice to be able to sit and speak to students and actually have them throw all their questions at me and to be able to answer every single one of them. I think it's very important for us to be knowledgeable in all of these proposed changes as well as these changes that our students might not like. Um sometimes you gotta take the hint of being the messenger that gets shot. So it's unfortunate, but um it's next to be able to, we will take that. Um I've grown as a leader in terms of being able to Work with other people. Um I've always been someone who has been very independent. Uh where I think that I work better alone, but it's been a very nice change of pace and it's been improved by leadership skills to be able to actually work as a team and function with other people. Uh it's definitely been an growing experience of having a co-senator, being able to communicate back and forth and Having to almost align our agendas as well as um going into a meeting with the dean and saying all the points that we want. Uh I plan to make a difference within the next two months. I didn't get to it with the dean, but I would love to be able to bring CHS as a whole as a college and have a volunteer day. Um similar to what we did with the V the match, but I would love for it to be specific to CHS. Where we go out and we recruit units uh to network organ sharing. Um but there was a big deal, but organic donations mean a bigger deal. Um working at the hospital that I work at. I see a lot of procurements and a lot of organ harvesting and um we all get letters in the mail that says this is hard for the two real things. It's something very special and I'd love for CHS students as well as student government to be able to experience that because It truly is something to be able to look at in a piece of paper and be told that something alive has been basically saved. So I think that'd be a really great way to bring student government as well as CHS as a whole to downtown uh campus together, working for other.
Thank you. Any questions for Senator Alvarado? Uh moving on to our C C Senator, Senator Tobine.
Hi guys. Um so first to start off, um if any of you are one pretty sure I am, I am at Maricopa. And if any of you have not been in news lately, um there have been some issues in Maricopa, so that is why I'm absent. Um my updates are pretty short. Uh as you know, as I said, I met with constituents on Wednesday and Thursday night regarding the health fee. Students I met with wanted to know, you know, what I was feeling as far as the chief of senator, as well as um what this health being paid. So I spoke with the students to understand kind of what they're concerned. Um one night was a male student and the other night was a female student. Um and so I loaded the hand where my constituent fly with the with the fee increase. Um in addition, this we found some of the Dean Ryan's executive director of business operations regarding involvement on the campus. Um more importantly, working with the business operations director about the work that the dean often has every semester. So the dean of that has a lunch every semester with these students, um as well as other students as well, but mostly it's these the students that are invited, um which is upcoming. And so as soon as that thing is solidified, I would love to extend an invite to all of you. Um in addition, um I think that even though I've been in U F G I have just for a little bit so far. Um I've worked pretty hard the past month in student government to reach out to my students specifically to kind of meet them on their level. So send emails with students, um communicate with them via, you know, the website that JSA has. Um JSA is a very different culture than most, and I feel that meeting most students at their medium is what's most important. Um I feel that it's been shown and has impacted the lives of students to this point. Um I think as far as learning how to be a leader, um one has to really understand and step back and really control and run everything. Um I think that's something as a senator I have to learn very quickly. And then I wanted to kind of send a thank you to all of the members of this organization for their dedication to it. Um and then finally, looking at the next two months, I'd like to continue to set things in place for the next administration as well as the structure for the future seats of senators so we And um do what they need to do effectively. And that's gonna how I guess my update for.
Thank you, Senator Tobine. Any questions? Seeing none, moving on to our conference.
So to address kind of Senator, or sorry Senator President Perkins, uh you know, uh so how I've been in my so. Um I think just uh kind of like Senator, just being accessible and letting students know they're on their, um you know, their own problems. Maybe even while you're in school, maybe they need something else and you know, it's still trying to point them to a resource that I know. Um just because being a student government, I've been really able to Kind of look over the campus and see where all these resources lie on the campus. So just being able to like point students in the direction that best suits them, I think. I've just been able to, but I feel they're being learned. As far as programming, I think I definitely have. Coming into college as a freshman, I was really scared of this and everyone else always would, but um I definitely never would have pictured myself having a meeting with the dean of my college. But it's really cool and it's been a really good experience and it's awesome to be able to tell people that I've been able to do that. Um it makes me feel confident going into any other future endeavors I have because if you're gonna meet with your dean, it's it's a pretty big deal and And I kind of just feel like I can leave and have like a successful conversation and you know, their family's safe. But as far as making a difference in the next two months, I actually had a meeting with the dean last week and um she's talking about building this center for my bonus for students. And which I think is super awesome and uh so she's moved her channel to maybe an email. We're supposed to meet again sometime next week, but she got really busy, which is you know, very common with students. I've been really sick all week. And um so that's okay, but we went communicating with she and her to talk about um maybe getting some sort of student feedback about what they'd like to actually see inside of this. Uh one was uh her student center. Um so I'm really excited to see kind of where she goes with it and just to see what it can look for. And that'll definitely improve uh the lives of other students as well for.
Senator Alvarado.
Um if Senator Conley would like, um I guess the justice would be very willing to team up with Conquite when it comes to this uh center. CHS would be toward it. Yeah, so if you would like to chat. Yeah, um. So you see if you. For on emails, um that are going between maybe.
Any questions for Senator Conley? Seeing none, moving on to our Copsas senators. Senator Alvarado.
Couple of things I did. I met Erica on Tuesday about the toiletry drive. She was working that tree. It's currently doing a drive. Was it just like a fall and all for campuses? And then actually it's tomorrow, but she said that we can somehow combine the two in a way. So uh she said that we might not be too. Plus any party. I'm going to do a drive. Um and I have most likely meeting with her again next week. Um so I'm looking forward to that. I emailed David Tyler, who's a doctoral student, um that he about four minutes in spring. Um he's working on a sock drive right now. So uh I might be meeting with him if not, if you can name this John. Um who's like in charge of it all. Um see if we can include some socks within the backpacks that will be um. Forty minutes out. Um as for the VAB, uh Senator Not being a strike for his inculcate responses, deadline has been appealed. Um I'll just leave that. Um going to look through Director Ramsey's Excel sheet, pardon that. Uh and that's the state bills that she has on it to say what we need to start paying attention to, uh that she needs um like He wished to be involved in this. So we'll be discussing some of those, especially House Bill twenty one hundred and two, which is all overdue. So that's definitely something that I'm including. Um I helped interview. And it is a senate. I guess for them, very interesting thing. Here it is, new people. Um in regards to the three questions, um how have I improved the daily life of students? I have to say like the small things or like I guess you can say quick picture. Um I Hold the door open a lot for people like every chance I get and just like Like making sure that I'm helping out people in 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 any way. And when I'm walking around campus, um if I make eye contact with someone, I try to give like a quick smile. And you know, I feel like those like small act of kindness um is important. Um I try to con 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 compliment people as much as I can. That's something I like. I like that. Um how have I grown or have I grown as a leader? I believe I have. I feel like um a lot of like my time that that management skills, my working ambition skills and my speaking skills have improved a lot. Um I feel like I've taken on a lot of more new challenges since I've been here, since I was a freshman. Um I feel like I've become a stronger person and stronger leader in my eyes. Um how do I want to make a difference in the next two months? I definitely want my toiletry drive to go really well. Uh was something that I included in my interview as an intern and as a senator, so. Um that's definitely something that I want to emphasize because I feel like it really shows that um maybe in in ASU, we usually Just care about um our community here. Um I also feel like um to make a difference uh with Like in regards to VABs, just because like now we can start focusing on the bill that are coming uh from the state capital. And I feel like it just shows that like we're trying to attack these issues at hand and show like And show the students here that like we do care about them, that we are trying to get Get their input and trying to give them a voice.
Any questions for Senator Alvarado? Moving on to our conference.
So this week, uh on my end, I was actually pretty busy. Um on Tuesday, we attempted to have a meeting with Calin, unfortunately. Um we scheduled one, we were going and then about an hour before said, let's do a conference call. And then when we were walking there, we told us, oh, we can't do a conference call. So we weren't able to be with him, but we have one reset open this upcoming Tuesday and things, so. Excited about that, uh because we have been gathering some feedback regarding progression programs and different things that, you know, we may need to want to look at. Um and yeah, just certainly. Uh um then on Wednesday, there was a Cronkite student leader uh dinner, which was great. Um you know, it was really just a big meeting of culture, uh Cronkite College Council and basically all of the clubs that were able to attend. And just have their presidents and vice presidents there to, you know, just discuss and collaborate and learn from each other and really just to meet. Talk about, you know, what ways they're improving the Cronkite and what to, what kind of work they do. Uh so that was great. It was good to meet people and, you know, obviously just sharing my information and making sure that they knew what I did, what the position was for. And if they had any questions, please reach out to me. Um. And then Thursday was, uh well, right after that, actually, we, I sat down with my uh co-senator and we started working on making sure that we were getting this uh Cronkite impactful Awards ready to go. So that's, I mean, that's a lot of planning and it's still in the works, but it's definitely going, it's coming along. Um and yeah, and just trying to make sure that we gather as much feedback as we can from the healthy increase. Um along with like all of the feedbacks in general for the calendar. I sent out um uh emails to all my professors and ex-professors that, you know, have access to that more to make sure that they post the Google form on there. So many people is, and if they don't fill out the Google form, they're at least aware that there is something going on. You know, you can't really force them to fill out the Google form, but if they are at least aware, you know, say, hey, we want to see their going up. Um so that's, that's kind of the things that I was thinking there this week. Um and I think part of that was improving the data logs of students and just making them more aware of like services we provide, making them aware of like us being there. Uh this position I recently was creating for them, so. So they, that I know that this is, uh, you know, the reason why we are here is for them. Um, and growing as a leader, I think it's, this has been really one of the first times where I've worked directly under a big, uh, person like in administration, like Dean Gervin. And I think he's a very important person, not just under, like Cronkite obviously, but I think like I've alluded to. And he's just a very busy person, but he started, he really does, uh, let me care about a lot of term students. And, you know, it's just been great to be able to kind of have been a lead. It's a cool kind of decision. Um, so I think that's been cool. Um, and I think the way that I want to make a difference in the next few months is to try and, number one, finish up and make sure that we have a successful event. Number two, make sure that we have some sort of, if not permanent change, maybe some sort of feedback that gets back to the calendar, the calendar, the university programs. And really it would be cool to have like this partnership that I have, I envision. Some closing after, we should be closing out some students, uh, some just scatters who are already like, uh, business, uh, close up, you know, professional, things like that. I would, I think that would be cool, um, just to have something with, you know, I have like a cool estate, say, okay, those are part of that in every one. Um, I think that's it. Kind of go from a side.
I was just curious, um, I know that, uh, Senator Diaz Martinez and Senator Alvin, uh, even their team a lot. I'm just curious on average, how often? Because Ico Senator and I have trouble a lot with that, I just wanna know on average, how often?
Um, so we actually don't meet with the calendar that often. Thing is, is that we are always in communication with him, that's the coolest thing. He's very, he's very transparent about communicating with us, but we don't, we probably see him once a month. Uh, he's always like doing a lot of things because in addition, he's also seen somebody and tells a lot. And so, yeah, he's always busy, but we're always in constant contact. So that's, that's the thing, it's like we don't necessarily meet with him, but we always have a line.
Any more questions for Senator Diaz Martinez? Seeing done, moving on to Senator Alvin.
Hi, um, so I was kind of rushed over, um, when we met on Friday about these, and I'll probably go and just tell with that. Uh, we discussed the agenda essentially and, um, planning. Um, we also created a flyer, um, a Facebook event in order to create a QR code for people to just scan it off the flyer, so it will be freely accessed. Because having tickets will ensure that we know people are coming. Um, so we also sent in a funny press, uh, tricks on the guitar that are on the U C. Um, and we announced it to the organizations, uh, that they were going to part of this event. They part of it. And, um, Bryce Newberry, who is the president of the Cronkite College Council, he, uh, said that it should be mandatory, um, for a few representatives, at least a few representatives should be clubbed, if not the whole club to attend. Um, we could get the, get the, um, person he called, what did he say?
We, so even at the student leader dinner, we had like, I think like thirty.
Yeah.
And that was not all the clubs, but we would definitely be able to get, I mean, if we had a successful, yeah, we could probably go. But, you know.
Yeah, so, um, that was really good to kind of announce to them, so they can find it ahead. I saw them put it in their calendars, um, have a set date, April twenty sixth, seven P M. Um, really excited, cause it started out as a pretty small idea and now it's really big. Um, so that's exciting. Um, yeah, we have meeting with the calendar Tuesday, because he wants to have like face-to-face见面conference, which is, which is what we agree is better as well. Um, and I actually sent out a doodle today, uh, for availability for VAC meetings, so we can put that all right by tomorrow night. Um, Senate President Kirkland decided it would be better to do it bi-weekly, just monthly. As there have been some comments I think of those, Rosen, Rising, I remember them, have a reason. Um, in the past, you, um, we've been kind of discussed and finding solutions for those. Um, and as far as Senator President Kirkland's questions go, um, I feel like I've improved the feeling a lot of students by making it known to them at every event, especially Cronkite related, that there's something, or someone that, um, they can always turn to and then help. Also, uh, and then I feel like growing as a leader in the sense that I have some responsibility for things, a lot more than I used to. Uh, I used to just push them off the side and be like, whoa. Um, but I feel like stepped in more and made myself more available, closer to the responsibility than I normally would. Um, and in the next two months, I hope students come to ask me about questions regarding this year more often. Um, and hope that my event in April has an impact on the way students interact on campus and motivate them to do great things in the future, since it is an award ceremony. Say, I want to reward, um, Cronkite Impactal this year. Yeah, that's it for me, um.
Any questions for Senator Alvin? Okay, seeing done, oh, oh, sorry.
Okay, um, top of my mind, is it going to be all organized?
Uh, just, this is a Cronkite specific event, um, but anyone can come and have the food and, uh, people.
Thank you, President.
Any further questions for Senator Alvin? Seeing none, um, and also seeing that our advisor is sitting in the room. Um, we can move on to our first new business point. Before we do that, is there a motion to strike three goals from new business? Is there a second? Any objections? Okay. Okay, moving on to new business, starting with the strike system. Is there a motion to discuss? Oh, wait, I retract that. Um, Baby, would you like to give your updates?
Yeah, uh, of course, I have a more even task today, um, uh, uh, but, uh, we have our setup downstairs after the meeting, there's some Reagan notes and there's some people offer the downtown meeting women's basketball game today at six. Uh, it is a request, highly encourage all, uh, I can't reform by everyone asking reform, that you go for pitchfork awards, that's something you want to do. I can recommend you have dinner beforehand and make it an event where you all go out to eat, go to the TV. One of the things that I really am not anticipating with each of you is the, um, especially for the people that have a close head injury, in fact, we are not talking to one another and each of them are going to be being by themselves instead of together. So please be mindful of that, um, communicate with one another. It's always better to come in with an agenda that is supported by a goal so that you can make a, uh, stronger impact than if you have two separate voices. Um, and I say that, as you see today with your, uh, with your votes, how that could stay out, but in terms of here's where we all are, uh, in passing or not passing something is like the words the same when you are meeting. She, you're all supportive. So that's all I have to say.
Senator Alvin?
I don't have to, I think we should all go out to dinner before. The better.
Family dinner before pitchfork awards?
Yeah.
I like that.
Also, Baby, what are we supposed to wear?
Oh, so there's red carpets and all that stuff, so from student, first of all, that some people wear evening gowns, some people just wear a pack shell dress, some people wear jeans, people wear clothes that people would wear to class. I'd rather you all wear some nice cocktail attire, uh, but I can't vote.
Senator?
Just speak to that, I think we should be classy. Um, I think we should do evening gowns, I think that'd be really nice. And if anyone wants to borrow any costumes, I would prefer prom, so. And I have the balls here.
I'm having you. I'm sorry.
This is the first, um, this is the first year that it's not the downtown campus or not the downtown campus now. It used to be at the Oregon Theater, so downtown had a much stronger role and students really just think of it was so classically. I think this year with the being of the pavilion, it lost a little bit of that, including in our reminiscent shift and in in our home. So we still have time to vote, how we've always carried a lot over the words home. So I hope that God stays the same, uh, this year, but I can't vote, so that's my urge.
Great. Any further questions for Viviana? Seeing done, moving on to new business, starting with the strike system. So is there a motion to discuss? Is there a second? Any objections? Right, go ahead. Senator Alvarado?
I think, uh, the strike system would be a good idea, just because it would be a good idea to have a deadline since, um, the clubs, the people that are requesting the funding are still, they have to stick to a deadline themselves. I feel like as an organization, we need to hold ourselves accountable to approve or deny their funding in a reasonable amount of time. So I feel like this would be a great way to do that. Just because we have, we already have strikes, um, issued to those who do miss. Um, and if, and like, they don't post a meeting then at the time.
Senator Alvin?
Um, yeah, this is technically a deadline, because you don't want boards waiting for their money to pay before. Um, there was one organization that had to pay out of the pocket for their retreat for their group. So there's even, uh, that shouldn't have mattered. So, um, I think having a tight deadline and the strike system would definitely reinforce the importance of getting using on time, um, even though it seems a bit harsh, I don't think that's a bad. It would.
To that point, I think it's important to set up a system for future iterations of USGD as well, to have a format of what we expect. Cause the system, like we all know, is very new this year or the semester. And we're all kind of figuring it out for the first time and having a consolidated system that requires senators to vote in a timely manner. Uh, just for future, like I said, future iteration of USGD to follow, that would be ideal. Senator Vermaelen?
Um, I completely support the idea of having a system where we have deadlines for incentives. Um, being someone, uh, um, I believe that is over, I think that we're using strikes that go towards the strike law so that USGD buys. I think it'd be very like weighted towards VAC, because there's a lot more opportunities for senators to get strikes. Um, I do think that we should have a penalty system, absolutely, because, uh, people do drop the ball occasionally. I understand, um, we have other things going on in our lives. But, um, to the extent of it needing a strike, I think it is very heavily reimportant for the members of VAC. It does carry a lot of more pressure and weight. And so, um, just considering the idea of the opportunities of receiving strikes, being weaker era, um, attending the absence of voice, um, legislation, usually the only type of strikes you can get outside of this or VAC is someone not posting the agenda early enough and someone not, uh, responding to A R F. And to weigh that with the amount of opportunities for VAC members would receive a strike, I just think it's a little, um, lopsided. And, uh, I'm not saying that's unfair, because there should be a penalty system. I just don't know if a strike is the best way to allow, you can do a point system maybe. I just think it's, it is harsh, I do agree with Senator Alvin, but I think it's too harsh to the point where there's a lot riding on a senators now that are competing.
Senator Alvarado?
Uh, just to clarify, uh, a senator can also receive a strike if they are not in business. Casual attire for the Senate meeting, senators should also, um, but to Senator, if you're supporting that maybe creating like a new, like a system or something, I'm no longer on VAC, but perhaps, um, I still receive, uh, the emails for the request, so I see that you guys still get a lot. So, uh, perhaps if you, uh, don't vote mainly on two or three of the funding requests that you receive, maybe that counts for one point, or maybe just one whole strike. Just kind of seeing an average of the requests that you received, how can you figure out a way of what's, uh, a reasonable amount of requests that you don't vote on where you should possibly receive a strike if you miss maybe two, three deadlines.
Senator Alvin?
Um, Senator Alvarado, um, I think you have a point, cause I like to point to you. I'm gonna go to the other point. That's a good point. Um, so I agree with you, I agree that strikes are harsh. So maybe having a sec, cause we already have that set point system for the whole, which is, we had a smaller system for your solely VAC, that be too like specific? Or would that be better?
To that point, um, I understand where you are all coming from with the opportunities to get more strikes if you're on VAC, but if you think about it in broader terms and the effect that it has on student organizations, if senators are consistently failing to go on time in a timely manner, it affects student organizations directly and also puts more pressure on the chair of VAC to make a decision and override the committee, which isn't necessarily a good thing for our democratic process. Uh, so just remember that in terms of the whole, like just think about the purpose of the whole strike point system that we are, uh, posing and the effect that it has on us. Cause at the end of the day, that's what it's about. Um, Senator Diaz Martinez?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to, I think these are all going to be, but I just wanted to make sure that we get something down like legislation, I think that would be really important. Uh, because this is all informal and I hope that we are meeting about like creating a legislation. I just think that like, you know, cause I'm not, I'm kind of having trouble actually. But if we have something to look at and then it's like, okay, here's like, here we'll get a strike for this, here's our deadline. And this, you have to like make sure that this is when you get the votes in, because we are normally based on the rolling, uh, deadlines, but we need to make sure that we get them. I just think we should have like five. So we're the five, eight, so we're four, like thirteen, whatever.
Right. Senator Alvarado?
Um, to, um, to Senator Diaz Martinez. It's important to, um, the bill that we just passed for VAC, um, states that if only, I believe it was a third of VAC, um, has responded to what they believe should be, we're denied to that one request. Um, if, if it's been a week and only about a third have responded, then it's up to the discretion of the chair, um, to decide a final decision. So, like, if that makes sense, sorry. Sorry, so, um, this is definitely something, um, how you said, um, we need to put on paper. So, uh, one version that I already took a note down was that, um, VAC is now going to stay biweekly and the bill that we just passed is monthly, so that's something that we definitely have to fix. Um, so this is something that I agree that I should add on, um, then to the point I was going to suggest.
All right. I can't remember as well. Nevermind.
Senator Vermaelen?
Uh, to Senator Diaz Martinez's point, um, with, I get that we need to put this on paper, but would this overall be a bylaw change, just to just put some legislation that was passing?
To that point. That point, that's what legislation is, it's.
I know, I mean, I just want to specifically say.
Yeah. Senator Galvin.
So Senator Alvarado just mentioned that. Put in the bylaws that's. That's uh, oh, I would be able to, for chair of BAC, be able to override. The decision if. There weren't enough votes out there. But then again, I think it'll be after the. Pass was submitted, then again, there's always organizations who here and there forget to submit invoices. Or don't provide enough information, or we ask a lot of questions about it, I mean that. Makes the deadline kind of shaky because then in reality, we kind of say two. It can, it's confusing, um. So I, I don't know how to go about.
Um, we're move on, Vivi, would you like to.
Sure.
Just take your idea.
Yeah, so um, what has been happening in other campuses is that if. Um, each of the days, a third of the, third of your committee votes, for example, Mondays and Thursdays. Uh, yes, and and throughout the course of work, just very often. And then um, Thursdays, Thursdays. Um, and we all just trust that we all have the same processes, the same. Uh, ways of between the organizations, but that takes away from our institution being broad and able to go and taking a week. Get there with all the questions. Um, then everyone, you want to just work on that another place that will. If you're like, I'll scratch that one, um, and then that gives each of you the opportunity to look at the invoices and what it is that. All of them. Are uploading, what I've noticed is that some kind of. And so I wonder if it's just. Process, so if we minimize the number of days that you have, um, for you that, um, you're. Part of the. Uh, just suggestions. Thoughts about it, um, I understand where you're coming from, you want, obviously you'll be proactive in this. Uh, but at the same time, this means that, like Rob and Galvin mentioned, you're pushing and following a request or X amount of things now. Some of the organizations are also submitting a, a request for an event that is supposed to happen in three days. But it's not something we can be. Uh, just um, I think that because now they don't have that five days, but how long can this be in the arm? So that's pretty strong in reality. I know I said a lot, but still, it's not a lot of the time, so. Um, Senator. I think these two.
Okay, Senator. Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to. Quick point. Um. I think we do have a situation where it's like really weird and we we prolonging, there's a lot of comments, I think. Having these regularly scheduled meetings will help to bring them in and then like clear anything up. So I think like that, in addition to like having new meetings and. Uh, you know, anything that can be solved like in person and like we see right away, I mean, because most of the time, we can tell right away if there's like something's busy going on with the. Request, we couldn't be able to flag it and be like, okay, this person is submitting, please say, show up to the BAC meeting at this date, this time, this place. And I think that included in the bylaw change would help to clear that up. And just to be flagging it right away so that their funding isn't delayed and then also clear it up right away versus like having to. Take a long time. Senator. I don't know what you want, Senator Alvarado, just next.
Um, in regards to the invoices, um, perhaps we can make a, a rule or. Something in the bylaws that holds the student organizations accountable to where they can submit their. That if we could somehow make it a requirement to where like they can't press submit until they put the invoice on, or if they're, if that's not. Possible, perhaps if they put in the. Request, but they don't have the invoices, maybe say, hey, you have three days to put the in, invoice in there. Otherwise, it's gonna be. Yeah, like denied or like, yeah, um, I'm not sure how we did it before with BAC. If, because I'm sure that when they came in person, they, when they submitted their request, they already included the invoices. But were there um, any times where we didn't, and then what did BAC do that?
To that point, we tabled it indefinitely, if there were, if they either did not, whether they're not present at a meeting or didn't have supportive documents, we just tabled it indefinitely. Uh, but before we move on, Vivi, can you just say something?
Yeah, so uh, I wish that the process was that, uh, we could adjust that some other way to that exactly. Now that you submit something, but I think this gives you all an opportunity, like, or to accept that, you know, saying, yeah, um, if you don't submit within three days. We have not the right, because that's not one of the words, we are able to deny the request or we'll be tabling the request until you update, so that then, until you update. So that then it doesn't become. You didn't, you didn't approve it, it becomes you didn't provide the information. Uh, so right now, there is room because it's such a new process, there's room for them to say, BAC didn't let you have this, or the BAC didn't. Provide me documentation, but if you see the process before, it took two weeks for them to get heard and then whatever it took to take. So really, I think that because they succeed at this is easier, their priorities sometimes as they should be, because their requests sometimes don't match. What the process should have been, so this is where you're able to put boundaries and say. Right, you know, and communication, so I advise to Rob and I said, after you, I, after you approve or deny, say, here's the next steps. That way they at least know what's coming next, they can't say they haven't. Uh, if you don't, if you don't submit, another thing that has been going on is, uh. They submit an invoice and then Angela goes to pay it and then they're like, oh, we don't want that anymore. And so, and so then it becomes Angela have to backtrack and, and so then Angela will then have to ask in about. I'm going to need the most, um, or at least the correct invoices, yes, okay. So it's just more the communication that we need in the comments section and that way everything's under, so that people are not left in the dark, have those signs. Uh, how should I?
Uh, believe Senator Galvin's next.
So just a quick question. Any answer is. Um. Senator Salas on. On BAC, yes.
Okay, yeah, because I just seen that right here, um, she does not follow up on her peers.
Yeah, I followed up with her and asked her if she uh got the email. Um, originally she said no, then I asked if you could resend it, and then I followed up with her to see if she got it. Um. She said yes, that she completed it.
Um, okay, well, I can. I'll, I can talk.
If you can follow up with her too, all of us can, yeah.
Um, also, I. I like the idea with the other campuses, how they work it, how they do. Um, instead of third of the committee.
Plus one of the committees, yes.
I'm sorry, um, the only problem with that for our committee is we don't have. If, you know, six, including myself, and I don't approve, I don't like review, I just approve it or deny. So I believe, unless somebody is willing to do, uh, both days. I mean. Um. I mean, we have six total, so.
Wait, wouldn't that be?
Yeah, I'm bad about that. So, you would need two. Oh, I was thinking. So never mind, we'll see how. I don't know what I'm thinking. Um. So I think that's really smart, I, that could work.
Awesome.
I. Somebody a little. Uh, an objection moving, um, I think the one problem that I can think about having that system is that say. Um, you ask a lot of questions and say on your day on Monday is your review day and you review the request and you have a question. But then you don't go back and review it until two days later and you have another follow-up question and then it just like keeps going like that until, and you. Aren't technically not mandated to check in every day, so if you follow that like every other day schedule, it could take a lot longer for the process. For you to like actually vote. Uh, so I just, I'm just not sure how we would approach that. Do you have any ideas? Or that kind of concern?
You can also have somebody come in and see what they're. See if any of that works through to law, if that they manage to take them, putting them to a line. And then we all have the question of. What we're actually thinking and all that stuff, and then. They would have to be maybe have those statements.
Yeah, Senator Alvarado.
Doing well. Um. I don't believe it's been explicitly said, the timeframe, um. When the request is submitted by a student or what is the time we want to meet or full response to be able to. I don't, I don't believe that's explicitly said.
To that point, instead of bill thirteen that we just passed, we. So a student organization or an individual requesting funding for traveling will have a decision. At the latest. Any comment? Senator Galvin.
Um. And then now I think. If there is. Actually, let me be more.
Senator Alvarado.
I'm concerned with. The amount of pressure that this will be putting on the BAC members, especially myself, um. I, I agree with you, focus on it as well as, which I'm possible as well, being a full-time student, um, I'm concerned with. The expectation of us to be on there every single day because committees are expected to be once a week or uh biweekly, so I'm concerned that, um. Especially like, you know, BAC, it's gonna be a lot of pressure on the members themselves, to tell them, or voting members, be able to go on and. Make a vote every single day or to approve, like look at something, request an uh. An invoice, and so I was a little worried about how much pressure that'd be putting on the. I love the idea of being able to put a timestamp on it, we want this to be approved by then, but I don't know if there should be any expectation of them to be on there every single day.
Senator Alvarado.
Yeah, so what I wanted to do is to kind of like, think everything that we talked about to kind of figure out, okay, going back to the main point, the strike system. Kind of touch on that again, um, yeah, so I just wanted to bring that back to what we're actually talking.
Alright, uh, Senator Galvin.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment really quickly. I think like, yeah, we shouldn't have to be on there every day. I think like, yeah, it's a little annoying seeing like your inbox full of thirty emails. I know, I get real, you know, and I look at it, I'm like, oh. But, but I think that like, we, because we do have a deadline, I think like, look. She's gonna have to like archive it or do something, but you're gonna have to make sure that by that date. And I think like, BAC is just a very like important meeting and it just has a lot of weight because it directly impacts students and like their ability to be successful. It's just like really important, so, I would say like, that's just like kind of the nature of the, the game, but just to make sure like. Let's just get, get it going. Hopefully it's not like. But I mean, otherwise.
Senator Alvarado.
Um, I was thinking that, yes, it kind of sounds overwhelming, it may be for the speaker. But I also think that you can distribute your office hours beyond my days and maybe allocate some for that. Instead of like having a pool of hours for office hours, maybe you can do that in conference hours. And in that way, it can be more broken down and easy to handle. And also, it may be overwhelming now, like if you go into the system and just start doing it, it may be okay.
That is a good point, I'd like to remind, um, Senate that reviewing requests does count for office hours. Um, just so that you don't have to do all that extra doing, plus the hours that you already do, can't get overwhelmed, instead of. Senator Alvarado.
Uh, that's something that I would say, if you were on it during your. Hours. Hours. Like what you're gonna do, she. Something that kind of came to mind, um, like we, because if you guys are starting to meet, I would agree again, perhaps. Because the student organizations and individuals don't have to come into. Meetings anymore, perhaps when you do have a meeting, you review all the ones that you have as if it was a BAC meeting, how we work more, just without like the organizations and the individuals there. So it would stay. Tied, I guess, um, with like the whole thing where it's like, okay, if it isn't done in a week or something, so we kind of go back to how BAC was before. You know, like.
Uh, Senator Galvin.
I don't remember this time. Um, because I was. Um, so this is an idea, maybe not best, but. Could maybe have. Meetings weekly with no deadline or by week. Because if we had these meetings where we sat down together and filled it out together and talked it out, the other we would get probably more done just because it's all there at the same time. Um. And having it weekly, that means we're getting a week. So there's work done, all in one day at the end. And having then essentially those meetings with the deadline, but. Um. And then there's always the five.
I'm gonna jump to Senator Tobine really quick, Senator Tobine.
So I think to, um, Senator, Senator Alvarado's point, I think that the five weekly idea is probably a good idea. Um, and then what would happen, we could, you know, every, all senators consent to vote, or they could vote on their preference during the week. And then at that meeting, we could render those decisions and then at that point, the BAC chair, um, would then make those decisions on like the work. That's what I think would be a, a really good idea.
Senator. I just want to clarify, I'm not trying to like say that we shouldn't be doing any work because student government is the helping hand between administration and our students. Um. I was, the initial concern was too much work and too much pressure, but to Senator Alvarado's point, um, I really do like the. I didn't even realize it, to be honest, that we could cut as office hours because when you think of the committee, you think of that committee meeting. You don't go to that committee meeting and say, yeah, I went to the EAC, those were my office hours, um, but with this whole very, uh. Delicate situation as well as very specific, um, it's definitely something that we need to toy around with. Um, I do like the idea of, uh, Senator Tobine as well as Senator Alvarado. Um, their points to the biweekly meetings, um. I do love the idea of. The deadline, I really do, um, it's just a, it can panic me a little where, um, someone that didn't mention like going on there every day, that did. A little, but I'm fine with a weekly deadline, it's just the expectation of it going on there every single day is a little, is a lot to take in it. But the deadline of the week is perfect, I love it, but, um, I think we just need to toy around with the expectations of our BAC.
Is there any more discussion? I do agree with Senator Diaz Martinez in the sense that we should, uh, codify this discussion, like it all is very informal and there are good ideas that are being thrown around. But I think that we eventually should come to a consensus as a senate and put something in our bylaws that holds us accountable, so that way we can serve our student organs and also that. Um, Senator Alvarado.
I'm willing to work with several for.
And well, if you're able to schedule support, on the wow, that is definitely a weekend, we start mapping out the legislation. And then we move that timeline, we of of course have to vote on it. But um perhaps whoever, I mean, what uh like if we agree on certain terms, maybe start writing that out. And then maybe with someone else on a different day and they disagree with what we wrote, then we can just start writing that out too. Just that we kind of have like both or just like all kinds of ideas written down. So when we're ready to pass, we're like, we already have it written down, there you go.
Good job.
Um I really do appreciate all the discussion and actually allows me to learn and tweak and let's see what what I can advise. So one of the things that I did really appreciate was his point uh in terms of uh weekly deadlines, how much can we you all have weekly office hours, like each of you have to do a day of, right? So then and how long is that?
Different.
So um budget, I guess, uh you need to tell me that you're unable to review requests at that time that you're at office hours, what are your other possibilities there? Because then you wouldn't be able to meet that deadline if you move some time in your office hours. So I think uh I I advise that you that you look into that process a little bit more because I feel that it will alleviate your stress, not feel pressured in your domain and still be able to use your office hours in a way that you that you're up to. With the organization and with what and with the.
Senator Gavino, she's great. Um I really like that, I honestly can say that I don't think anyone in here spends a solid three hours strictly on U S G.
In a row.
In a row, oh, no. And and to that.
I know, there are some passionate people.
I understand that, I just uh the more I do the obvious, talking with her, lovely ideas, um make me realize that it's not that bad. Um I so I absolutely do not spend a solid three hours on U S G without getting sidetracked anywhere. Um but to that point, involving it as office hours and you're gonna be sitting down and doing U S G, might as well walk up on the board so you can do it. Um thank you, you're changing my mind, I appreciate it.
Senator Alvarado.
Um oh, okay, so whenever you have the next meeting, I think uh the committee should uh talk more about this. Um and so perhaps start figuring out what works for you now. So once you start doing that, maybe for like the next week, week and a half, you kind of choose an idea that you want to work on, see if it works out. So like we can kind of like start on that legislation, just we want to like figure out like all the different ones, like I said before. Um but kind of be be figuring out what works for you, because as of now, since the bill that was just passed, if that if it's pretty sure it was one third. Um and they're the only ones to have answered that it's up to the chair um to have this. So as of now, um you guys need to abide by those bylaws. But if you guys want to start figuring out a way, just to kind of get a general idea of what we need to do.
Thank you. Very early discussion. All right, I definitely think that we should revisit this either at BAC or at Senate next week. But I think we got a lot done today in terms of throwing ideas out there and kind of exploring uh scope of BAC and how we want that to look, not only for the rest of the year, our own ten years, but for the next three. Uh so any further discussion, final thoughts on this business model? Okay, seeing none, moving on to National Walkout Day. Uh so I have some pretty cool news. Uh I was contacted by somebody that works in the Vice Mayor's Office from the City of Phoenix. And he told me that the City of Phoenix was interested in partnering with U S G D for the National Walkout Day for gun violence in one forty. Um and he suggested that uh maybe City of Phoenix would like to hold a press conference with us and we could write a resolution, either in support or in opposition of National Walkout Day, if that's something that you all are interested in. But I think that would be a really great way for our organization to comment on uh you know, what's been happening with uh gun violence on the national level as well as bringing it into the city level as well. So any of you who are interested in writing that resolution, uh definitely let me know, let uh Chair Alvarado know. Uh that'd be a really cool opportunity to not only for our organization to get students involved in this conversation, but to work with municipalities on it. Senator Gavino.
Um I just need to say that I'm interested. I was actually in a class yesterday and we had a call coming to speak about gun violence. At this time here, this I will be like, for the past three days, there's been a gun kind of thing, it's everywhere. Like even when you came for class yesterday, it was like there was one in Washington. Everything is just becoming too much, so I think it's something to really consider, I don't know.
Uh I'm gonna bring up something that Vice President Lee said in the board. Uh but if this event that happened last week in, or yeah, Florida, was really unfortunate. But I think the silver lining of this whole situation is that students across the country are taking it to the end and they're wanting to take action. I really think we should jump on board with that, especially because, you know, City of Phoenix wants to assist us with that, so. Um these talks are very much in their preliminary stage, we're deciding what exactly what action we want to take. But I think it would be great for our organization to take action in general. Uh but of course, we need to get student feedback on it as well. So I think once we write that resolution, we should distribute to students, see if they think they would need the support of doing this type of partnership and then going up there. Senator Gavino.
And I was just about to say that, um this is a very touching subject. Um gun violence isn't only in the educational systems, we've seen it in churches, in nightclubs. And it is not solely just affecting the students. And um I urge you to um make yourself available to these constituents because a lot of them are scared. And um it is not a normal thing to be comfortable about talking about. So um I'm making myself available, if you'd like to send any constituents to me. Um I have been very educated on this topic specifically, um with everything that's been going on as well as looking at maybe rights of you know, guns as well as um the availability of buying a gun to any age range from eighteen to twenty one and um. But yes, if you are wanting to send any constituents or if you want to sit down and if you can talk to you about what I know and you can share what you know and what you are community constituents, I just think this is something that you should really make yourself available to these students because I know that I'm a friend of sending my brother to school, he goes to high school up in North Central Phoenix. And it's a nerve wracking thing and um I hate to see our students not be knowledgeable of the rights of laws and the stance that they're are willing to take through us. Because in the end, they are taking a stance with us, what they say is what we go, like what we do. And so um I just, I really want to reiterate the fact that be able to sit down and talk with a student see how they feel and be a comfort as well, that I think is important, us students standing together and supporting them.
Is there any more discussion? Senator G S Martinez. Uh it's likely that that press conference would be before the walkout day, that's my guess at least, to maybe advertise.
Okay, to like encourage people to.
Yeah. And just sorry, that's your thought?
Nevermind.
Um just to provide some context uh for the National Walkout, so there's been talk of uh or the obvious for the National Walkout Day is to, it's for students to walk out of classrooms for seventeen minutes at ten o'clock in the morning to honor the seventeen students that lost their lives in the incident on Valentine's Day. That's kind of the idea behind it, just as a statement. Uh and that's really as, at least as far as I know about the National Walkout Day as of right now. But uh in terms of what we would do with the city, uh again, we're still talking about that. Uh I think that's a conversation we should definitely all be involved in as a whole Senate. Um so I can definitely include you with any updates that I hear. Um but yeah, I think this is something we should all be involved in, definitely. Uh is there any more discussion at this point? Okay, uh seeing none, we'll be on some old business, seeing none, we'll be on some final statements, are there any final statements? So anything that you guys wanted to say?
Yeah, I mean, we're just with the state press, so we're here to interview after you guys are done, if you guys have here a little.
Okay, well, thank you.
Uh I have someone, final thing to say. Uh just as a reminder, I know I mentioned this uh last couple meetings, but I think if you're interested in either submitting an executive ticket for next year or running for Senate again, uh the application is due at eleven fifty nine tonight. So uh it's your last chance to jump on that, uh yeah. Uh any other final statements? Right okay.
No, I just did.
Oh, yeah, so for the next uh for the next year, if you're interested in either submitting an executive ticket, so running for president or a vice president for U S G or running for Senate for the next school year, that application to uh for the election cycle is due tonight. And you can find it on the website at asuelections.com and it's due eleven fifty nine. Thank you.
Yeah, any more questions? All right, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting at four forty seven P M? Uh is there a second? Any objections? All right, this meeting is adjourned.